She's also challenging. Especially the years taking some happy classes.
It became herself an easy.
She has a couple, I wouldn't call it easy, but challenging. It's like a, like a, this is a film. So I guess we ran, we have already filmed, studied, we've got it together. I think it's easy, but it's challenging.
We have to talk about it.
Right.
But it's a good challenge.
They got it set in stock. I like that.
So I, I encourage you that one, just that piece I mentioned.
With, uh, yeah. I suggest that I can get, they go, I'll be there for you. I'm gonna write it.
Yeah.
The capital letter, the capital letter and every fifth word is his message to us.
I was giving you plenty of time to, to, to plan, yeah.
Like thirty seconds to spare.
That's where she goes.
Oh, that's seven.
You made it. Good job.
Hi, Jack. No, no, it's because I became riveted in trying to grab some dinner and read about COVID updates, so. Should never do that. I know, it's not a good story, I'm sorry, but I'm here, look. I think so. All right. Same.
Second. Second.
Any discussion, anything?
I just got a question. On the surplus stuff, whatever doesn't sell on that website, what do you do with it?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of different things you can do with it. Most of the Google chart itself, you can also donate it to, try to do mostly in your schools, you know, some charter schools before, and then like to do those orders, we usually have someone go and separate, we set up a metal, and you get scrap money for it.
Ah. Okay, all right, just one, thanks.
All right, thank you. I got a couple items that I have posted here, many of them you're already familiar with, so I won't go through each one in great detail. But as I've kept you up to date, kind of the first two weeks of school, I really tried to make it a priority to, to get in and, and at least try to say hi to, to all of our staff members, at least pop in, uh, just to each classroom, and so I can tell you that with most of our kids back, there's a lot of familiar things happening, even though it's not exactly normal, we're not back to normal, things are, are not exactly the way that I think people would remember them, but when you walk into classrooms and see the teachers interacting with kids and, and just see the excitement, uh, that they have to be back at school, it makes you feel like that's familiar. When you hear the kids asking certain questions, or when they're talking about what their favorite thing is that they've done today, you start to hear those answers that you would normally hear during a school year about what kids love about school. So to me, that certainly was very rewarding, that, that those things are starting to sound like what we would normally hear the first two weeks of school. When you see teachers helping kids with lockers, that's what you normally would see during the first week or two of school. So, so a lot of those things are definitely very familiar. At the same time, you know, just to get to that level, i- it still takes an, an enormous amount of work. And so I think parents would tell you, it's not back to normal. Their, their, parents are still navigating with getting messages and trying to help us with all of the things that we're dealing with. Uh, our staff and our students are still kind of the same way. So, so just know that, that it, there's a lot of energy that goes in to just making things seem familiar. And so don't, don't ever underestimate that, that we are only in the third week, and there's a lot of energy that has gone in to make just these first two weeks successful, and so I hope we can keep that up for the rest of the school year. But, uh, but that's, that's one thing I want to impress upon people, that, you know, that's, that's, that's noticed on my end. Uh, one item that, that's also very familiar to last year, we have relaunched our COVID dashboard. So on the website, we are trying to keep people up to date with pertinent information, and so they know that we're, we're trying to, to help people understand what we're still navigating with in the district, um, and at the same time, the good news is that, um, you know, it, it looks like a lot of the strategies that we're deploying are working, of, and, and so that, that's also good news. So there's kind of good news, bad news dashboard, if you will, in regards to kind of being transparent as, as what we're navigating, but also hoping that that gives people, uh, confidence, that we are, uh, trying to do everything we can to keep kids at school every single day. Um, one of the items that I wanted to mention to you that we're doing throughout the month of September is getting input on the next round of ESER funds. So we've got some initial input from a survey, but as we have committee meetings this month, as, um, I visit with, uh, staff during, uh, during different faculty meetings, just to get another level of input. So we sort of got a, a decent level of, of input through that survey, but I think trying to hear some, from some folks, um, I guess you could say more face to face, or, or go deeper with some of those items. So beyond just some of the items that we've prioritized, what are maybe some more specific things that, um, would align with some of those priorities? You can see we've launched a thought exchange, so we do have a page on our website that's dedicated to giving, to providing that information. So we're going to continue to keep that page, um, updated, and like I said, that thought exchange will stay active throughout the month, so that people can continue. If you go there once, you're encouraged to go back a second time, a third time, a fourth time, because there will be more thoughts that trickle in throughout the month, and, and even if you don't have a thought to post, you can go in and rate some of them that you think are good ideas. So I would encourage people to take a look at that, and then, like I said, uh, the goal is to not just go there once and then be done. The goal is to come back, uh, several times and just see how the conversation is unfolding. Uh, another item I mentioned there is I've, I've started my professional development for this mo-, uh, for this year with the Social Emotional Learning Fellows Academy, and so we're a group of thirty-one individuals from across the country that make up the cohort. So I think there's seventeen states represented, so once a month, um, we may have a whole group meeting. So, um, there's never really more than one gathering every month. Another month, we're in smaller groups. So we get to know some fellows at a little bit more intimate level, um, and then we also have a job-alike cohort. So there's two other superintendents in the cohort, one from Illinois, one from Arizona. So, uh, they're really doing a nice job of balancing whole group, small group, and then people that are doing the same job as you are. And so ultimately, we will be putting a project together, and, uh, the project I'm working on should align well with our, you know, goals and strategies and strategic plan here in the district. So I think it's going to be a, a good fit for, for me to use that as a way to continue the work here in the district. And then lastly, uh, one of the items that, uh, just to be quite honestly, if we weren't having a meeting tonight, I'd be somewhere else. So a little bit bummed about that, that, uh, that I, I can't participate in this opportunity that one of our alumni is, uh, setting up. I was watching the news before I came here, uh, she was featured on one of the local news stations, so, uh, doing a really good job of, of trying to help out um, with, uh, with various efforts in the community, and so encourage people to check that information out, and if they feel compelled to get involved, uh, please do so. Uh, I think we always wonder, you always wonder, uh, how do you know you made an impact on graduates, right? You always wonder, is it, is it them getting into college, is it them getting a job, you know, out of, out of high school? Is it the test scores that they might produce, uh, before they, before they graduate? But I really think things like this kind of spotlight a, a number of things that hopefully we, we feel like we had a hand in in some way, shape, or form here in Afton, our staff members, um, and our students that, that, you know, helped shape this individual. So, uh, definitely wanted to spotlight that as, as something that I think speaks to, you know, the impact you can have on someone, and then they take that beyond, uh, just their high school years and continue to do that, um, you know, very early on in the, in their next stages. So with that, any, if there's any questions on any of those items, be happy to, to, to talk about those.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, a comment. I'm really excited about the Fellows Academy, I told you that when you replied, and so we're looking forward to, you know, seeing what happens with that. I, I, I did have a question about the ESER funds, so, so we're getting a lot of feedback, and there'll be feedback from each of the buildings, and, and so then you'll, um, get some recommendations to bring to us and some options for us to, to look over and then decide how we want to move forward as a district.
Yep, so we need to put together probably a more detailed plan, and, and so the, the little bit different, um, I guess you'd say arrangement with this third round is that as much as they wanted you to hurry up and get your application in, they also are giving you more, um, leeway on when you can spend the money. So the, the first two rounds, it was hurry up, make decisions, put the money to good use with technology or other things that you think are an immediate need due to the pandemic. This one, there's a little more breathing room. And so while we've put some basic structure to our plan, we feel like we envision spending some of that money on salaries and benefits um, to, to go directly to working with kids. We also feel like there's probably some capital outlay or some capital improvements that could be used. So we were kind of under the gun. They opened the application, I think, July twenty-third, and by August twenty-third, you had to have a plan submitted with at least a basic outline. The good news is, though, we can, we can alter that plan. And so, so as we get more input, as we bring forward to you those specific items with specific dollar amounts, some of that may align with that basic framework that we've already put in there, but if for some reason it doesn't, then once we become clear as a board, as a district on, you know, how do we want to spend, you know, that money, then we have time to make those adjustments. So yeah, that, definitely, this is still what I would call kind of early stages of, of chipping away at that, and then at some point, we would bring back a much more detailed kind of bulleted list of, this is what we anticipate, the cost of certain items, and, and we would like for you to, um, you know, I guess confirm that that's, that's what you believe that money should be spent on. And I think, and, and then Steve will talk just a little bit about that in the finance workshop. I know our finance workshop will be mainly tax rate information, but at the very end, uh, he's put in just a few updates on, on, uh, some of those items. But, yeah, good question.
I have, which probably is an anecdotal question at this point, but is there a sense that being able to use the modified quarantine is helping us keep more kids in classes? Even as the numbers, you know, some public cases?
Yeah, I, I, I think unfortunately, we saw a perfect example of sort of like, what's it like when you can't use modified quarantine? And what's it like when you can? At the early childhood level, we're not allowed to do that. So we, we experienced what that looks like when a whole class has to quarantine versus, you know, we haven't had to do that yet at the K through twelve level. So I feel like we've sort of experienced both of those, and I, I think that you can rest assured that that is, that's absolutely, uh, been to our benefit, that we're able to come back with parents, and at the same time, th- this is new for us. So, so every time we get a case, every time we contact trace, uh, because this is a new process, uh, I, I, I mean, I can't even explain to you how convoluted the flow chart is that our nurses and our contact tracing teams look at, and, and so we are still working our way through this about, okay, this is a different scenario, so what are all the if, and, or, buts? You know, kids, we know kids are in classrooms, but then they also go other places in the building, so you're constantly, I, I don't want to say second guessing yourself, but you're also constantly saying, did we miss anything? Did, or is there anything else that, that we need to consider before we start calling parents and letting them know, you know, what, what we think the right thing to do is? But absolutely, I think it's helped to keep kids in school for sure, yep.
And this, this crazy flow chart, just all of the logistics of doing this modified contact tracing quarantine stuff, I mean, is that, is that directly related to St. Louis County Public Health and, and their input? Or I'm just curious where we're getting, kind of the, what's helping us inform that flow chart?
Yep, and so, and so, yeah, that, there's a, a, they give us those guidelines, and so then when we're going into a case, we've got those written guidelines, and then they let us know if there's anything in there that's been updated, but ultimately, we're still calling, or we, we still have access directly to them, so if we can't, if we're not sure about the way something is written, we can always call and get a live person and say, are we interpreting this correctly? But, but yeah, working with our local health departments, that's where, you know, those, those things come, come to us from, yeah.
One more question, just related, I think, how, um, how do you feel it's going with finding stuff, is it as hard as it was last year?
You know, it's, it's, it's better than last year, so that, that's, uh, as I had, as I had my department meeting, um, you know, this, this morning in working with our HR department, that is something that, just like last year, I want to continue to track that, you know, weekly, monthly, so that if we s- are, are starting to see a, you know, a decline, we can react to that. So we definitely are using, you know, our teaching assistants a ton, so I can tell you that, which sometimes mean you're not able to backfill that teaching assistant position. So, you know, those are some things we're doing to, to keep ourselves afloat, and so it, I, I think it's definitely, you know, this time last year, we weren't in school, but if you remember, but when we did come back in October, November, um, there's, there's virtually no way we probably would have kept schools open in November if we were all kids at school at the same time. Having the hybrid schedule allowed us some flexibility to actually keep kids coming on the days that they were assigned, and so we're definitely in a, a better place than that. But, uh, but that is definitely something we need to continue to monitor, um, but, uh, I think we've been able to, the good news is we do have some long-term positions that we knew were going to come up as the year got started, and we were able to get those filled. So that, that helped us know that we were off to a, a better start, that we were getting some of those long-term positions picked up, um, right away for staff members that were going to be out right at the beginning of the year.
All right, let's move on to four point oh two, new staff orientation report.
Yes, evening everyone. So our new staff orientation process, uh, always includes three days. First one, uh, we stole from, uh, the Lindbergh School District, because we liked what they did, it's called Scratch Off Day. Uh, this is the time where all of our staff members come in, uh, we have a very long, multi-page checklist to make sure all their accounts are set up, their laptops are, they can log in and everything, uh, and they're not stuck day one trying to figure out can access this resource from the platform. So, uh, that day, uh, we have, you know, our full battery of technology people available, uh, and we, we usher people through that process on that day. Uh, then we follow that up with a district orientation day, where we have a, a full program, uh, includes Dr. Brock, myself, uh, and other programs coming in, like SSD and our, our union, uh, to give sort of an overview of welcome to the district. And then finally, the third day, uh, they're with, um, their building, and they're doing, uh, sort of a checklist with their building council, and tours, things like that. So, uh, that report is just kind of a quick overview of, uh, the feedback that we received, uh, from that day. It was three days. Question? It was a, it was a lot, it's a combination of a couple things. Number one, uh, we didn't have any people.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and then two, um, there, there was still some log in the laptop, burning into a room, how do I get to hear, uh, things? So we, we've, uh, definitely looked at that as a process to put in for next year, so make sure they don't leave until we fill it up. Show me your screen, show me your screen, show me you did.
Yeah, I would say one thing I noticed when I was here, so not only did we not have a lot of new staff, some of them actually were already with us. So, so even though they were going through maybe new teacher orientation for the first time, they had either come on board last year in some way, shape, or form, or had been with the district for a while, so, so they sort of had a lay of the land of how things work in Afton, and yet at the same time, we, we wanted to include them with, with this opportunity, uh, due to maybe a new position or if they joined the district after the school year started last year.
Four point oh three, we just got back to school, can you report, Dr. McGee?
Yeah, so we had two days of professional development on August eighteenth and August nineteenth. Uh, and you see, it was a very robust, uh, set offering, uh, I think we, we probably maybe overplanned for that, and maybe offered a little too much, but we got some good feedback, uh, in fact, we even met with the PDC today, so I'll bring them to you next time, we're gathered, uh, to get even more opportunities for improvement, uh, from, I think overall, uh, the mix of in-person and hybrid, uh, definitely made for a, a positive experience. Uh, when we look in that first room, you see that there's, you know, ninety-six percent of people are, um, are getting what they need from their, their sessions that they're going to. Uh, obviously, we were shooting for a hundred, uh, but just to even be in, in the neighborhood, uh, shows that our professional development is going in the right direction. That is one hundred percent because of our improvement, our, our achievement during, uh, not only planning new staff orientation, but also, uh, our district, uh, back to school. Questions, all right?
This is brought up by, uh, building, or was it primarily contract for everyone?
Uh, it was basically a, a menu of sessions that were offered throughout the day, and people got to choose, and put together those in-person or virtual session. Uh, and sessions were offered multiple times.
So when we get positive feedback for some of these, um, like it's the best session I've taken, or whatever like that. Um, so what do we do with that so that we can really try to encourage more people to take it, or even require them to take it if we think it's like a?
Yeah, so part of that, part of the conversation we had today was like, one, who needs to see this online? So, I mean, it's one of our next steps based on this information. So, you know, if he's an outside consultant, that's an opportunity to build, build strong relationships, uh, to look at what the, not only the intro, but the intermediate, what the natural opportunities for improvement. Uh, but basically, that allows us to, uh, plan our January third professional development day, that's the next time we plan, we kind of have to district, uh, professional development. So, uh, we're taking this information, we met with our PDC today, and we're going to see to plan January third and make sure we know what we just learned.
Oh, Dr. McGee, if you wanted to.
No, I just, I just love, um, I love the bullets under opportunities for improvement, whereas it was so good, it could have used a full day session.
Yeah.
Like that's.
It's the kind of thing you're.
That is a, I know, I think, yeah, like that's what's just sort of pretty important, that notion that, you know, some of this is just, it's good information, and, and the challenge is just wanting more information, and I think that's great, so.
Yeah, part of the.
The more opportunities we can do, build that in through an entire, you know, session, for, you know, five or six leaders.
Yeah, I think, uh, part of the, uh, what work to be done is, I'm saying, part of the feedback is our, our session in the fall. Uh, and, okay, like, we, we balanced variety, uh, in several parts of it, yeah, uh, so I think we'll, we'll swing that, maybe move that, and maybe look at twenty minutes sessions, uh, and offer a little less, uh, choice, so that we kind of turn that down, and, you know, uh, we're always working to refine.
Okay, four point oh four is the full federal program meeting.
Woo, it was exciting. It was, uh, so every year, uh, we, we need to do two federal program meetings, uh, and, uh, I'll be honest and say, we didn't know that, and I had not been doing that until, uh, we received what's called a corrective action report, uh, because we then, uh, notifying people from Britain got communication that that was now a state request, and the state requested an agenda, minutes, and assignment form. Uh, so with that, we learned, um, we got that feedback, and now we do it. So it's really a, a simple process. So in the fall, we tell everybody what we did, and that's, or so what the plan is in the year. And then in the spring, we present data, we reflect on that, and we make the plans for the fall. So, uh, this is actually the kickoff, uh, we did it, we're there now, uh, and then we're going to come back together, uh, in the spring, which of course, and I will send you an email to you. You might remember, this was the beginning, I feel like you're about to invite any more number two last year. Uh, so, uh, I will do my best to make sure that you are here next time, and, uh, you were a part of this spring meeting. So not a whole, uh, exciting and engaging, uh, meeting, but it is sort of a box that needs to be checked, uh, and, and. Uh, the most exciting thing is the number of unique members that were, that obviously even wanted to be a part of it, like, this is not an exciting event, and yet we did get, uh, twenty parents that were really interested in being a part of it, and some of them showed, which is great, uh, but it doesn't matter. We have their email address, and I'm going to invite them again to the spring one, uh, a little personal invitation to, to encourage them to attend. So it's always good that we can engage families in the middle.
Seems like most of our partner districts have got someone there this time.
Yeah, they're, they're less excited, I try, uh, I mean, I can only do so much, but I, I did invite them, uh, and that is part of the requirement. So I, I did document my invites, and, um, and put it in a screenshot for.
There you go. Any other questions?
I tried to think, federal programs excited.
You did.
That's right, thank you all.
All right, section five, some comments, we're moving to agenda items, do we have any comments? We will move on to section six, personnel items, and so first, Chris.
Okay, uh, first, we have some staffing changes, uh, we have some, we have two resignations, one from main year administrative assistant, and one, the early childhood center is, also, it's really a retirement. Uh, Lauren Knowles is going to retire at the end of the year, school year, and then, uh, we have a lot of new hires, a whole bunch of them. So main year, we got a new administrative assistant, a playground cafeteria monitor, and a part-time school age facilitator, which is Cougar Care. And high school got eight concession stand workers, one concession stand supervisor, a part-time school age facilitator, and I think that's it for the high school. Then Goch is an instructional staff assistant. Rogers got a student council sponsor, and district-wide, we got two bus drivers, which is exciting. Uh, we have a part-time school age facilitator for the district, uh, we got our HVAC tech, and, uh, we have a substitute nurse for the district. And, uh, uh, administration recommends, and I so moved the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this? It is. So, uh, all those in favor, say aye by raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries? So then, we have a bus driver recruitment and retention memo here, and, uh, I didn't know if, uh, Steve or Chris would like to speak to it at all, or?
Yeah, I mean, I have your work list there on it, so yeah, um, uh, we just prefer two bus drivers, so that definitely helps the situation. But, um, and, and kind of looking at that department and, and knowing that we have, uh, all the room to add some, some employees to hopefully expand our, our, and, you know, through, through the school, we're kind of thinking of what we could do, um, in order to not really, you know, attract new employees, but also, uh, keep the ones that we have, is, as an industry we're hurting right now. So I think, um, what we came up with is there's, there's several options that we can do, but we thought a good solid first step, especially considering the fact that, um, we have, we did have two people apply, and that's going to be a lot of time drivers. Um, a good step would be just to raise them on the salary scale. So we did a little bit of research, kind of similar to how we, we, like, if someone are in a straight position, it's comparable to this person. compared to other departments, things like that. And I thought that we were in the bottom five in terms of accounting for bus drivers. So that's very amazing, helping every school district in terms of having that bus driver position. That's good. So the recommendation here would be to use them from where they currently are scheduled, kind of like from cheap to high. And then we would look at that as kind of a first step. That would put us in a top of the bus driver salaries, putting your hand in. It would make it much more competitive.
I'm very happy to see it, yeah, for sure. I know our community likes the bus service, and I know they want it to see, you know, keep going instead of going the other way, so I'm very excited.
I appreciate it. Seeing the break in on too, so we can see this really is significant. This is not, you know, totally, this is like, it's getting caught up.
Yeah, so for existing employees, the, I think on the lower end of the scale, we'll do about a dollar fifty an hour increase, and on the upper end of the scale, it's up to two fifty an hour. So it should, it would be a substantial increase.
Yeah, that's nice. So District Administration recommends, and I so moved to approve the bus driver pay rate increase as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Justin, are all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero.
Where does that leave us now in terms of how many more we'd like to hire? Is it three more still?
So three more would get us to where we were, we may have to move it down with a couple of substitutes, which I'm also kind of following by the way it's not our substitutes, while there are two, that are still technically employed by the district. And I'll say that I'm not relying on coverage from them, isn't, isn't there anyone that's actually there wanting to... Not directly, so, so, you know, three would get us back up to where we were fully, but I'm not sure, I think we're trying to work out right now how many would be ideal for the month to be, I hope you're ready to move transport.
No, I think you said it well. I mean, there, there always is the balance of, yes, we know we'd like to hire a few more, but we also want to keep a consistent group so that we don't end up in a situation where we overpromise and underdeliver, which is the way you feel right now because of the fact that we've over, we've really promised a lot in the past with the kids that have gotten transportation in Afton, so.
What percentage of the kids that we used to haul are we moving around now? Do you know roughly just where they're at?
Yeah. I think we're, I think we're right at about half. So I think when we've seen, you know, you know, maybe pre-pandemic, when, you know, the last two years, we had, you know, roughly seventeen hundred kids that were on routes. So a district of about twenty-six hundred kids, about seventeen hundred, that meant we were right at about seventy percent of kids. Not saying that all of those used the bus every day, you know, both morning and afternoon, but there were that many, and we're about eight hundred right now. So we're at about half of that in regards to what we can fill compared to what we might expect to be like a normal request. We might expect to get anywhere from sixteen to seventeen hundred requests to be on a bus route. And right now, we're only able to fill about eight hundred, a little over eight hundred of those, yeah.
Well, my question was, I know I saw the information, you were here a couple weeks ago.
Oh, sure. I believe it's kind of like, just like trying to think when we see something.
I'm trying to think of the pattern, and my follow-up question was, do you have anything like, I mean, more kids, the two more bus drivers? Where does that start at, one plus?
Yeah, I mean, I... I think, you know, conservatively, because of the compressed time windows we have with our routes, really getting about forty kids on a bus is about as many as you're going to get. And to do it in that time period, that's, that's even a little tight. So if you figured just a conservative estimate of thirty kids per, and then you take a look at two routes and four tiers, you start to kind of add those numbers up a little bit. And you're talking two hundred and fifty kids, roundabout. So, you know, I think that's getting us closer, inching to that. I think the other number that, at least I saw when we were starting to put those together, is that the actual requests for transportation were down a little bit this year. And I'm assuming that's parents who are just saying, you know, I get it, we don't have as many drivers, we can find a way to make it to school. Or, I mean, we've had kids that literally live, like my own kids, who could take a bus to Rogers, who live on the same, you know, they're a street over from Rogers, who, you know, we wouldn't request a bus at this point to do that. So we've probably had some situations like that, too, so.
No, that's a good comment. It's good to have the context to look to more and look to more might add in the current climate, and then once we get, we get restrictions, it'll ease up a little bit.
Yeah, I think the good news is, any route we add literally does impact every building. So in a four-tier system, that's the good news. If you add just one driver, it means service that is ripples through all of our buildings. And, you know, Chris kind of talked about what that magnitude might look like. But regardless of, you know, what, what the overall number ends up being in regards to how many kids got added, it does help every single school, the way that we have things structured.
You voted on the question?
We're all done.
The next one's kind of related, though, so. Okay, so moving to section seven, ideas.
Yes, so this is, I'm talking about reducing the before and after care rates for Main Year and Gach related to the transportation issue we were just discussing. So, you know, we, I think, talked about this a little bit, and this is part of us being twenty-five percent reduction in that side in November, kind of the highlights that I know of. Steve, I don't think anything to add as far as, anything on the, from the table or anything for us at this point?
I don't know if I have any to do as a, as a, I'm entertaining with the transportation competition.
Yeah, I think, I think just like we wanted to try to be decisive with, you know, helping with the transportation problem, we also wanted to be decisive with, you know, helping out folks who normally wouldn't need before and after care. And so, you know, that, that type of discount, I still think we're in shape to probably break even. So it's, it's one of those things where I don't know that it's going to be, you know, a hardship on the district if, if we do this, and likewise, you know, if a family uses it all year, they might get two months where they normally would be paying. And so hopefully, if they stick with it, or if they have to stick with it all school year, it's kind of equivalent to possibly they came out using it for eight months, nine months, but, but really were paying, you know, what they would normally pay for about seven months or something like that. So that was the logic of looking at what does, what does the pro, what's the program look like over the past five years as far as revenue and expenditures? And feeling like, you know, this is certainly something that seems like, you know, it's, it's doable. And then also trying to give people the benefit of this as quick as possible, knowing that I think we can sustain this throughout the school year. So even if we add buses, even if we add routes, and maybe some of these folks drop off of before and after care because they did get on a bus route, I still think we can probably sustain it through the rest of the school year and don't have to worry about coming back to you to reset it at, at some other time. You know, I think we can do this and then kind of be done with it, and then folks can plan accordingly. And then I believe we can recalibrate things so that next month, this will be, if it's approved, we will, you know, we'll start, be able to start putting that into action next month.
Yeah, and so that's, that is one thing that is kind of a carry, it's in the recommended action, but does that be getting one or more? So just in case, I'm wondering why you remember. If you're going to be the voice on the first of the prior one, we had payments due in twenty. So October end, we just put that on September first, and it is like twenty yesterday. Thinking about that process and what that looks like, but they most of all, you got me. Could be doing a massive upgrade. So we'll try and make adjustments before it closes, we go out on October first, for them.
And kind of above this, if you pat yourself on the back, it was brilliant. Did our, our families like that?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, it's a great idea. I love it.
I will tell you, I walk in the morning sometimes, and so I was with, and so it wasn't me that did it, but it showed up the next day on, on this document. I'm walking with a friend, and there's traffic from Main Year. This is a half an hour before Main Year starts. There's people waiting to drop their kids off, a half an hour before, from Main Year halfway down to the train station, you know, railroad tracks. It's a long time to sit in a car first, and then there's kiddos that are playing in the playground. And so my friend said, can't we just get those kids at before care? And I said, well, that's an excellent idea. And the next day, this shows up here, so.
And then we got any questions?
I know, I know. I just, I mean, I think between the two things, I feel like a lot of families are really going to have what's best for them right away. Because I think with this change, there's going to be some families who, this is going to help them be able to choose this that might be even better than them using the bus service. We need to take some of the financial stress off, so. It's a little bit, and so we need to make sure that get that information out to them, too, as soon as, if we approve this, assuming that we do.
Yeah, so, Travis and Steve, is there any reasoning why we would need to revisit this or want to revisit this for the second semester?
I don't...
We're feeling like right now, we're in a pretty good position to just say this is what it is.
Yeah, I think so. I think that, and, you know, granted, when we made this recommendation, didn't know we'd have two bus drivers on the agenda. And, you know, it, it, I think that it accounts for a lot of things. Like it just, it, it helps people budget long-term, helps them plan long-term so they don't have to wonder, well, you know, the district could always change their mind, you know, two months from now, and now we're back to budgeting differently or something like that. So I think that way it gives people certainty for, for the rest of the year. And I, I don't know that we would recommend it if we felt like it was depend, on a month-to-month dependent basis that we were going to, we were going to somehow not be able to confidently do this, so. And we'll, we'll still continue to try to staff our before and after care program so we can take care of requests. And, you know, just like everything else, that, that's no small task to, to keep that program, you know, up and running. So, so just because we, you know, may approve several things here tonight, you know, there's still, still lots of work to do to keep, keep our transportation program, our before and after care program running. But certainly, these are things that I think could be helpful to, to folks along the way.
And it's something you need to break on, part of this, but are we going to put on the invoices to go out? I, their identifier of what we're doing with the discounts, there's not a surprise. And here, if it shifts back to where it was.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent positive how much that might, I don't know. If they can put like whole price, discount price total, or...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is this possible, or have they been there or something? Surprised with it?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'll, I'll work with that and see.
Kind of the scenario of a little duty goes unfounded.
Yeah, people open arms next year if we have to.
Any other questions, comments? The administration recommends, and I so moved to reduce the before and after care rates for Main Year Primary School and Gachial Elementary School by twenty-five percent beginning in November and for the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Have a second.
Second.
And all in favor of the motion, if I may say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, this is zero.
All right, section eight, school improvement items, Mr. McNeil.
Assessment program for twenty twenty-one.
Hope he's back.
Woo, yeah. Well, we're getting used to the form, we're near, I think, three or four to this, this model, this template. Kind of thing for you to pay the most attention to is just recognizing that we do highlight all the changes that made it on that first page. There were a couple emails today that were still getting updated, so if you refresh your screen, all those were done by the time I sat down on the chair, because I got to do that over today. But those are within the documents. Any questions on the assessment plan?
Are there any tools that have created with all the removed assessments that we still need to fill?
No, I think, you know, I think that removing all of those things happened very much at the same time all the unemployment protocols happened. So I think we're, we're in the process of evaluating where we are and filling in anything that is missing. So right now, we feel like, you know, we filled a large gap with the N W B A tool that did supply it to a number of lineups that we were using. But I think we'll always be under, looking for opportunities, making sure we have the right tools at the right time. And we do now have a process in which the Evanry Council can approve the addition of assessments that's needed, which was a process that we did not have previously, so we can come to that now.
It's a really good, comprehensive report, and I appreciate the tables so much. Makes it so much easier to read.
Yeah, I wish I could replace the entire document, just the matrix. That one page is just the easiest thing to, to understand, and I sold that for making.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for stealing it.
Any other questions? The administration recommends, and I so moved to approve the assessment we're bringing in. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes six to zero.
We have already moved to our workshop, section nine is on the Friday workshop.
All right, I think I'm going to have Krista join us right here, next to Steve. I have Dr. Dr. Piveter. I'll turn to Steve and Krista and everything.
And Dr. McGee, since you're the only person that's here extra, if you'd like to, you know...
You can sit in the middle.
No, no, you can't do that.
Security over there.
And I think we're okay to just keep going, because we're in the round, right?
Yeah, I was going to say, if we need to take a break, we can.
No, I think we're good.
I'm okay.
All right, we'll be looking at this slide for, I think, hoping for a decent amount of conversation, so feel free to try to get any questions. And then following up on my question and comment about trying to put something up anymore. So we can, so very little you can say, you know, after twenty-five percent discount. There's something on those, but they're not going on.
And also, we're in the charges of twenty-five percent, so learn what's happening. And then, seven, hopefully label it one, two fingers, and that's right now, so.
Okay, so our agenda for tonight, we're going to look at a couple of our fund balance charges, maybe jump on a little bit, we're going to talk about tax rate process, what our history has been. We're going to look at some of those recent data, and what that might need for us when it comes to two weeks from now, where we've actually cruised rates. And then we're going to, we're talking about the duties again, and the, the, the boy, because people was here a few months ago. We've been looking at, you know, some stuff like that might get quite poor. And then probably, I think, we're going to show you that, it's kind of where we are right now. It was, it's been done, kind of that frame, or I'll call it that, put out there. And, as we said, waiting for, you know, some, some more. So the first, I guess, I have to give you the first chart. I think there's our operating fund balance, this one is completed in every budget document that we get. So, sort of, it should be brand familiar. A couple of things that we're going to point out are, I guess, the last two years. So last year, I think we all know, we finished with sixty-two percent fund balance operating. And I also think we all know that maybe not quite where we desire it to be. We're, we're twenty-five or fifteen percent ready. So, you know, that is definitely something that we're talking about point times, sort of keeping run. And, and what I'm talking about moving forward. So one reminder, I guess, I'll say about that, a couple of reminders about sixty-two percent is a lot of higher level women being, it's not accidental that we ended up there. We, you know, a little, I'll say this time last year, but a little bit longer, maybe eighteen months ago, we were sitting and wondering how quickly this was going to impact us. And then when we went to set tax rates, we set up differently than we had before, where we really scaled back what we were going to do with capital projects, and we put foreign money in operating. And then everything turned out to be better operating than we even anticipated. So that's how that sixty-two percent happened. So that's one thing that I think, you know, I think you're free to think about, yes, we ended up in nowadays that we, you know, we need to talk about and, and address. But at the same time, company, so. You always talk about things turn out better than you anticipated, but it was.
Such factors that we just weren't sure about. So, generally, whether we were receiving on time, whether we were impacted, how they would come in, so just trying to be conservative and address that the best that we can have.
And so then if you, you know, if you look at this chart, another thing I mentioned before, we live in the future and talk about what we're looking at, is that you can see our tax rate difference and what it's just as easy. So, while on paper we're at a completely different place, we also need to realize that other things are, I miss jewelry. It didn't change very quickly without properly having any discussions like this and things like that. So that's, so it's not, I'm saying that there's nothing like that, but just keep that in mind, that's why we have conversations like this. So we can not be looking at what things are like about here, if we, we're looking to keep this going for as long as possible.
Good question on this sheet. And this is, this is not critical, but every, the last few years, we've given a very conservative approach. And so we're always looking at the current year that's budgeted as some sort of a decline, and then we have to work out where it's going to be an increase. What is, what are the factors that might turn this year's decline pullback into an increase?
Yeah, so that's something that Krista and I have really tried to focus on in the last year, so it's just been far more difficult with everything else that's going on. You know, one of the things that drives us crazy is, I guess, the bad part of the area of discussion is we feel like we can't go and take money, or people, until we know that they're not like we spent it, which is difficult to handle. And that's when we, you know, do all the reporting, we see our actual, from our, oh, we gave four percent, and they're like, well, they didn't spend all these things that we thought we were going to. And now there's nothing to do about it, because you're, as we've talked about, it's a tricky thing to run a sheet. So that's something that we started across the last year, that we're going to teach our departments, and we'll be able to improve the budget. We did it on the main year last year, we went back and we pretty much said, okay, this is what we're asking for six months from now. Do you still need it? Can we take this now? And all of those factors, so.
It's not like a normal business, when you're twenty-five percent proof a year, you should have spent twenty-five percent of the budget. So, so it is really working closely with them, and we are trying to have more regular touch base meetings with them. Big asset priorities that are on our budget, and that's touch base, you know, you budgeted twenty thousand dollars for that, and then came in better, and then at fifteen, so five thousand dollars at all of our buildings, that adds up. So, working with our quarterly is something that is definitely we're looking towards to, to continue to adapt throughout the year, as opposed to in March.
And I'm trying to do that with dangerous places as well, I have no purchase orders, and I see things coming in that should show, or, or, or she's, I'm going to be making notes on them. So that I know when we go to do a book review, that, all right, this study could be twenty-five, that's about eighteen, so, so I know that I can take seventy thousand dollars out of this account, because this was for this item, and so, so we're working on that. And also managing notes, the principles, because the principles are one of the things that they, and they're charging a lot of things, when you do this, and when they go to do a book review, they might think, oh, you're paying twenty-five thousand dollars, so. And, although, you know, that doesn't seem like a ton, but we, we practice enough to sort of accommodate, so. Some of those working things we're trying to get through a little bit, we're also, I'll say, Krista and I are trying to be less conservative on some of our revenue, we were less conservative on, but it's the end of the work. We've just gotten, there are some of the trending, I'll say, the numbers that we've been hearing, and seeing things, and honestly, the numbers since, since we've been in those kind of tougher times a few years ago, we've, we've gotten better. Some, some of the insurance taxes, and then smaller revenue items, but definitely want that for, for revenue management, so that's what we're trying to do, and we're trying to be more realistic and just stay on top of those things throughout the year, so that's not a surprise.
I'm gonna say, for example, that is, talking about those years that we were only fourteen percent, and you'll remember that, the link taxes, that, that situation that happened was five hundred thousand dollars, and I think it made us very scared for a while. So we were planning to think that was zero, because we never wanted that to happen, and we remember that day. So I think, but like you said, we're just looking at historically and trying to put our best estimate based on history, not that one single year that we had to pay back five hundred thousand dollars, so.
So we're also doing something in, like, in other, in areas that Krista and I are in charge of, like, U W, that's been an area that's always been very difficult for us, because it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to, for, for gas, for, for, we, we spend a pretty good amount of time in generalizing accounts, but we have situations where either because of when we got built, or because of for the meetings, or because of whatever, we'll have no payment, no loan, two payments the next time. Instead of when you go and you look through your monthly costs for building, you think, oh, that should be really easy, a hundred forty thousand dollars, but it doesn't. Some months it might save you, or some months it might save you a hundred and twenty, so. That's one thing that we really try to talk to, is, one, trying to look at the buildings, and we try to clean it up so that, so that it's consistently happening, so we, we focus on that this year. And there's other things, like, um, checking endowment system for putting in places, early in the utility rules, and ensuring that not only are they supposed to be, but the government allows you to promise. So I think all of those things together should help us, you know, fine tune, and each year we try to pick up a year or two, so we can have hope of it also. I'm sorry, to your point, yes, that's, that's definitely something that we, we've wanted to, and we haven't done a lot of years. And so what you're seeing here, to Mike's point, is you see that twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen, we're saying fifty-two point one nine percent. So to my point, do I think we'll finish this year with fifty-two percent, I think we'll have another finish of other, but there's a lot of things that are still kind of unknown. Krista and I know that we have some work to do in which we bring it along, but we'll have it done in October. So that's kind of the tricky part of things we're going through, this is the timing, because we, we can say a couple of things, but we're hanging out there to be adjusted here, but they aren't necessarily issue for it, so.
We're not too much of a budget, we weren't sure exactly what this year was going to look like, what our teachers were going to look like, how many staff assistants there are going to be. So unlike previous years, that first budget provision is going to include those items, so we are going to have more adjustments now, what we heard it doing, I feel, work doing.
So, yeah, so that's, so that's based on kind of our current, um, there's like, so fifty-two percent, it's also based on what we see later, is kind of going back to our, our split that we did two years ago, between our operating and our capital tax, tax rate.
So, so I'm gonna ask a horrible question, is, you know, is it, are we talking a jump from like potentially fifty-two or fifty-five, or a jump of ten? Or is it how big was, any, possibly had in there, and I know that there's nothing you can do to tell us exact, is it?
So I'll say that with our recommended tax rate, I mean, our intent with our suggested split of tax rate is to bring sixty-two percent down a little bit closer, so we'll be, so.
Other than doing it here, but, but yes, that is our goal.
It could be up to fifty.
It could be up to fifty, it could, it could be up to fifty, so.
Or we can have a better idea, or when we do budget orders and want it, it'll like that we'll, we'll have a.
So it's true.
No. Our goal is the same. So that, that percentage stays the same throughout year two, we're giving you the most updated information as, as well, so.
So we're not even close to it, but what is the threshold for Desi to be concerned, it's like ten percent or fifteen percent?
So I think if you're below twelve, you get a letter, and then if you get below ten, it's, it'll step in, it's, I think, three, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
But I think, I'm gonna say twelve or twelve and a half, maybe years where it's a little early to start another, but, but it may be better.
Because we were getting close to that in twenty fourteen, so that's what I was like, I just remember, and that happened to other districts, and it has happened before, so we just need to be cognizant of that as we. And again, we're not even close to that, but as you said, we don't know what's gonna happen from year to year, right?
It's a little bit from a hundred percent to zero in two years.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, if it dropped down to twelve, probably we shouldn't be expecting more than a strong letter.
I think so.
That's a lot of money to disappear.
Well, some of the board members have not been here for that conversation, so that's why I just, you know, thought I'd bring that up.
That's a good point, thanks.
You know, like I said, I've been having these conversations and doing the quarterly budget revision, and I keep talking about it, you can't control all the other factors, if you keep talking about it, you know, technically, you know, it's a, it's a, to try to stay away from a situation like that, and try to keep this, you know, good financial spot for as many as possible. So our next chart, not a full lot to add about it, it's, it's, you know, something that we get on a monthly basis, we did, I think, when we did this two, last month, we did have a project about a block based on, based on the, what's needed, and that, and that, but you can see kind of, it doesn't matter what previous years have done, and how to participate in other work, or similar to that.
That's like my favorite chart, by the way.
Is it?
It's really easy to read.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't have any time for that, last year, we went before two, so I have these students that are, are impacting that fund balance percentage as well.
They are, and that's why last year, I think we did a lot of focusing work around things that we knew we were going to do and needed to do, and a lot of things that are safe, and making it available on those, those federal funds that they're coming in. So, and there were a lot of times we didn't necessarily add to our expenses that we don't have to do for, so another one that we're employing, went up to sixty-two percent. So kind of moving away from the fund balance conversation, starting to talk about tax rates and the process, just the reminders, we have a full area assessments that are sent to us in July, so the numbers that we're gonna look at in the full slides are based off of July numbers. The assessment office does still continue to work from July, equal September, so they can't change, the last time that we've been in contact with assessor was before July. So last time we knew what work needed to be done, he said, we'll be done by July, so, you know, my guess is that numbers that we have are probably fairly close, but there's still, you know, the process, process, and all that, and after that, a few times. So, so I feel something, that, that could change, and you see how much we lose from the numbers, but we're, 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 we're making something that, that we must, what we think of this. So, so as I said, we did this for a moment, it was in July, the post P O B was equalization, was kind of the last process that the assessment office goes to, to identify what they're going to send out to everyone for on their assessments. And that's in, that's in December, that they, that they sent those to us, so those are, I think, the last two years, they got here September sixteenth, so we're staying in recognition for that same. And then this year we're scheduled for the twenty-first, I think we should have everything kind of set, all our hands down and the teeth crossed, to be able to do the tax rate during the twenty-first, and to, and to approve it. So Krista and I are to have those submitted the same as coming to the collector for these active purchases that we do, so typically I think we have that, we make sure we have all our, what we have on there, and get those thing. So we'll, we'll start getting these taxes in December, and then final assessments, so this is anyone who got their letters September, maybe October from St. Louis County, and didn't like what it said, they didn't hear a lot of things protested. So those final assessments typically are due September thirty-first, so that's when, that's when a lot of our, a lot of our financial reporting has a separate way where you should use those September thirty-first numbers, because those are considered like a five, or you're, from St. Louis County. And then moving on to tax rate history, I remember when it was last year, so from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen, which was just about, you know, starting, we were studying, studying the tax rate, so. We, we were having some of those topics, and we were having, we were having some of the others, and we were having that, so two thousand sixteen, we did both of our propositions, and they both taxed, increased both the tax rate ceiling for our operating ones and for our, our tax service fund. And then two thousand seventeen, a combination, the new interest rates and the giant increase in sub, in subvaluation, what to us projected going over, and we, and we had typically, or, and we had told all of our members that we did. were to us projected way over a new, and we had typically, or then we had told all of our [inaudible 0:04:57]. Um, so that's when we decided to [inaudible 0:05:00]. Uh, voluntary rollback on our taxes, and then it's been [inaudible 0:05:05]. So, that's, and then we talked about it, we then [inaudible 0:05:10]. Thirty-five sentences in place, and so we are the, the [inaudible 0:05:15]. So, we are, we're, we're [inaudible 0:05:18]. Um, we really haven't had a conversation about doing that to this point, um, and I don't really feel like we've had a conversation about it this year. Very special, with the previous conversation on the sixty-two percent [inaudible 0:05:25]. We had, uh, the past couple of years, kind of [inaudible 0:05:30]. We, we decided that thirty-five [inaudible 0:05:33]. Those are [inaudible 0:05:34]. Which, um, is kind of, uh, as we talked about, that seesaw, part between increasing subvaluation, um, makes your tax rate [inaudible 0:05:44]. Essentially, trying to [inaudible 0:05:48].
So, is the line at the top of the maximum authorized on the next chart, does that include handcuff, or is that just?
Any, so, yeah, there's a little bit tricky, you're getting crazy handcuff, but you're only being really recognized in the last two years. So, I do that kind of this next chart, so what you're seeing is some bars are our sub, our sub, um, valuation [inaudible 0:06:03]. And so this is trying to visually show that seesaw, in fact, between the subvaluation and tax rate, you can see the years where subvaluation jumps, and tax rate's gonna happen. Um, so the purple section, the light shaded, for [inaudible 0:06:18]. Everything [inaudible 0:06:19]. By, those are the tax rates that we've set, um, for the past, oh, twenty years. Um, and then [inaudible 0:06:25]. You see a yellow shaded section, it's where we either want a voluntary rollback, so there's several years without. Um, and then the last two years is [inaudible 0:06:30]. Plus, tax [inaudible 0:06:33].
We had the two thousand seven, two thousand nine.
Correct. Yeah.
But then, and you can also see there the, the big shift that can happen, each of the bigger jump, you had it in seven, nine.
Right, and that, uh, and that was [inaudible 0:06:48]. Down term, [inaudible 0:06:50]. Self-valuation pretty, pretty significantly. And we'll get to the next slide, just looking at a little bit over twenty years of self-valuation. You try to do the [inaudible 0:06:54]. You can see the trend line.
This is great.
Um, but you can see, oh, like Mark was just talking about, uh, that, that dip in two thousand seven. Somebody's [inaudible 0:07:02]. The recession that we had for several years, [inaudible 0:07:06]. And then you can also see, um, especially, uh, starting in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, our [inaudible 0:07:14]. Um, so just a reminder, uh, assessment, or reassessment years are already here, so there, uh, you know, years in between are a lot of reassessment years. And the only thing, the only value changes are on personal property, they don't actually allow me to look at any sort of residential or commercial properties. So that's why when you're looking at the last couple of years, it kind of has that [inaudible 0:07:21]. Just a flag there, so it's not reassessment years. Um, those big increases are something that Krista and I [inaudible 0:07:30]. Today, um, between variously, uh, our last two, uh, reassessment years, we've had, one was about fifteen percent, almost almost on ten percent increases, um, won't regain, uh, [inaudible 0:07:44]. This year is about ninety percent [inaudible 0:07:48]. So, that would mean our last three reassessments, we're supplying it total, but last three reassessments will be about seventy-three percent in the [inaudible 0:07:51].
It's, it's huge, but when you look at it from the standpoint of just what's going on across the St. Louis region and across the nation, um, I mean, just property values and home values, it's, it's very much in line with what I think we're seeing. So, it's like, it's, it's huge and it's hard to wrap your head around the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic and, and it's going up. And I think that was part of the challenge of what, what's our expectation, you know, in, in what we saw in the last budget and everything. So, I think, you know, given kind of where we're at as a community, it will start to level off a bit. I mean, like, long-term, it, it won't, I don't think, continue to have this kind of, you know, crazy growth, but it's, I wouldn't be surprised between new development and just how horrible, you know, Athens is, kind of that's where some of that growth is coming from. And we'll continue to see that, continue to grow, and that's for a while.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same, just about the same thing, 'cause it's, mine grew, went up exponentially. It went up a lot, I couldn't believe how much it went up.
You got stuff for [inaudible 0:07:28].
So, yeah, there's a couple of things with assessments, um, that we, you know, work from our communications, the assessment office and everything. Uh, we've been working on it for, for several years now, he, he is, um, very helpful, said a cool business official, to you, um, at least once a year. What you're seeing happening is not necessarily, we're not in LA, um, so, to just a [inaudible 0:08:02]. We're, we're not in LA, we're seeing this coming, um, inside in total, uh, the areas that are, are seeing the highest increases are the areas that are, um, more than entry level-ish, um, like a hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollar houses. Um, those are the things that are, that are increasing most, so districts like, uh, [inaudible 0:08:15]. Handcuffed place, um, middle [inaudible 0:08:20]. Those are where you're seeing double digit subvaluation increases overall, um, the higher [inaudible 0:08:25]. The housing market still has increases, but there are more in the, you know, group four [inaudible 0:08:30]. And that's just, that's just, um, a sign of the times, I think, with the housing market, and, um, when you listen to the assessor talk about it, he talks about, you know, sales, other than these areas, or popular areas he runs into, there's a lot of sales, and one of the lot of sales in there, uh, they're able to collect all of that data, sales prices, and it makes their [inaudible 0:08:39]. Sub companies, all that, all that easier, and also when someone does, you get an increasing [inaudible 0:08:47]. That's not [inaudible 0:08:49]. He [inaudible 0:08:51]. He [inaudible 0:08:52]. Still supporting [inaudible 0:08:54]. So, I don't know, it's [inaudible 0:08:56].
Yeah.
So, another old thing that happened, that was maybe necessarily [inaudible 0:09:01]. Wouldn't be happening.
And then, another observation, just on this, in the project of future, if you take and look at the numbers from like two thousand and two thousand to two thousand five, two thousand six, you use that as the slope of the line.
Right.
And then you project that out, basically what we've done is we've recovered the loss from the, the, um, whatever the [inaudible 0:10:06]. Lost for [inaudible 0:10:09]. In two thousand eight, and it's, it's looking like we just recovered, but actually we saw the project above. I remember having conversations back in two thousand seven, we saw that huge jump, but it's like, okay, this feels unnatural. What does that mean? And then we had a big hole. So, it looks like what we've done is just recovering that loss.
We, yeah, we definitely recovered [inaudible 0:10:11]. From that, but you can also see [inaudible 0:10:18]. Even in the long, you're just trying to [inaudible 0:10:21]. Before, it does tend to be [inaudible 0:10:24]. So, there will be, there will be, that's [inaudible 0:10:28]. And, you know, you hope it doesn't take you as hard as, hey, that's in two thousand seven, but, but, you know, it's definitely something to keep on.
That's, yeah.
Sorry, there's always, there's always [inaudible 0:10:31].
Yeah, there absolutely is, I would also also say, you know, we, we're also a different community than we were, you know, five years ago or ten years ago, and just thinking about the growth that Athens as a community has had, um, I think is gonna taper or help balance some of that, and, uh, well, you, you'd hope, like, that's the whole point of economic, violent, and growth, and whatever, and, and sometimes, like, eventually beneficial cyclical spiral of good school district, good community, good school district, I think, you know, you may see a downturn in [inaudible 0:11:01]. Which [inaudible 0:11:04].
So, what, um, some of that growth, some of the new subdivisions, new commercial properties, sheltered [inaudible 0:11:11].
Yeah.
No, not there.
Not at all. They did.
Yeah, but what have we lost from it?
Well.
Okay, so our next slide is what, what needs to be decided, and be, um, you know, be decided tonight, um, that, that [inaudible 0:12:11]. Be decided by, something [inaudible 0:12:16]. Um, so, continuing with [inaudible 0:12:20]. As I mentioned earlier, it's not really a conversation that we, that we have in the future, I don't see this [inaudible 0:12:25]. That we, that we can talk about, get [inaudible 0:12:28]. So, then it only comes to, to the two things, one, setting the debt service levy, um, and so we'll, we'll talk about that, and what is that sort of [inaudible 0:12:38]. And, you know, that, that [inaudible 0:12:41]. Process, but, you know, we're, we're inching closer and closer to, and then, um, the levy that we can set for operating, um, what that split [inaudible 0:12:49]. Between our operating and our capital projects. And then this one, uh, you know, I turned it into a simple slide, because a lot of members on there probably have taken some talking through, but it's just a, it's, it's just a [inaudible 0:13:00]. Kind of, you know, it's tough visually to, to make it better. So, I'm gonna just start with, um, [inaudible 0:13:11]. Assessments, you know, talk about what happened last year, and then move into what we can [inaudible 0:13:16]. So, last year, our subvaluation was four hundred and sixty-two million dollars, so, about the, um, our tax rate, and this is similar binding with the blended single tax rate, here I should say, several, um, was four point nine one ninety-six. So, that was down from previous years, uh, due to [inaudible 0:13:28]. We decided what that is, eighty-eight percent and twelve percent, that means that eighty-eight percent of the four hours and ninety-one cents was set for operating, and twelve percent of it was set for capital projects, essentially means that eighty-eight percent was [inaudible 0:13:32]. When you are operating, twelve percent for revenue, when you're capital [inaudible 0:13:37]. And that's what I meant earlier, [inaudible 0:13:40]. All the [inaudible 0:13:41]. Trying to be, you know, conservative, as I guess the best word, trying to be careful with everything [inaudible 0:13:48]. Maybe seem to be [inaudible 0:13:50]. For operating, to make sure that we don't get very [inaudible 0:13:53]. Operating number, you know, with all these [inaudible 0:13:56]. And we'll slow down [inaudible 0:13:59]. Um, so that's what we did, and last year, as you can see, we got, uh, just under nineteen point three million dollars in revenue, and, uh, from one of our operating funds, and, um, you know, about two point six, two point four for [inaudible 0:14:04]. Um, so that was a total of about twenty-one million, that's about twenty thousand dollars, our collection rate was ninety, about ninety-six and a half percent, which is our historical collection rate, so that's another thing that the big conversation about last year is, what's our collection rate? Are we gonna be able to collect all these taxes, well, it was, it was, there was no [inaudible 0:14:11]. So, that was, again, something that's [inaudible 0:14:18]. But, I suppose [inaudible 0:14:21]. And then, moving on from that, our debt service tax rate was four ninety cents, so, um, again, this is something we've talked about all the time, but that's the, that's the tax rate, the real tax rate that we need to cover our debt service, um, in two thousand sixteen, when we did that on the [inaudible 0:14:38]. Uh, it's recommended by pretty much anyone who deals in [inaudible 0:14:42]. Debt service [inaudible 0:14:44]. So, [inaudible 0:14:47]. Um, so we've done that since, um, and that, and that did generate, uh, a little under two point two million dollars. Um, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more in, in that slide [inaudible 0:14:58]. Um, so.
So, the, are the SFR funds taken into account of all of this too? Because this is, I'm wanting to include all of that.
No, so these numbers are just, uh, so these numbers that you're looking at are just current tax rate. So, this is just tax on the [inaudible 0:14:58]. Those numbers, and actually, I have a [inaudible 0:15:01]. So, like, [inaudible 0:15:04]. Those, that's [inaudible 0:15:07]. So, moving on to next year, uh, you can see our preliminary subvaluation is five hundred and sixty million, so this is the first time, uh, topping that [inaudible 0:15:11]. Uh, that's a nine percent increase over last year. And you can see our preliminary tax rate based on that subvaluation, um, we go [inaudible 0:15:21]. There is four point six zero three seven, so you can see there's a little bit over a thirty cent decrease, um, that, that we're anticipating for our, for our tax rate this year, let's do that [inaudible 0:15:28]. Just trying to check [inaudible 0:15:31]. That we can, uh, pull that from, from that [inaudible 0:15:35]. Um, so, then, then comes kind of to our recommendation of where we see the best place where the district goes here, and what we put out was splitting it eighteenth and eighteen, so we're going back, kind of, two years ago, and how we decided to split, and have a little more focus on capital projects. Um, we're, we're hanging out there for two reasons, one, you know, done the [inaudible 0:16:01]. We still feel like we have one, we all, we've set a lot of projects for this year, and, um, this is most closely correlates to our budget for, for [inaudible 0:16:11]. And for [inaudible 0:16:15]. Having this [inaudible 0:16:18]. Kind of the second part of that, is that conversation about sixty-two percent [inaudible 0:16:22]. And [inaudible 0:16:24]. Pulling down the revenue and that [inaudible 0:16:28]. We're, we're going to potentially have that [inaudible 0:16:31]. Our operating funds, um, and we're trying to bring that back down, or then break closer to [inaudible 0:16:36]. Um, so that's kind of what our recommendation is, you're [inaudible 0:16:41]. Now, there's nothing to mention about the eighteenth or eighteen, you're [inaudible 0:16:45]. Point, and then [inaudible 0:16:49]. To the best of our camp, but to say that [inaudible 0:16:52]. Nineteen years, and they're not [inaudible 0:16:55]. They're probably [inaudible 0:16:58]. Fairly close, but, um, this one, we, we [inaudible 0:17:01]. Compared with [inaudible 0:17:04]. What it looked like, and [inaudible 0:17:07]. Fairly similar to [inaudible 0:17:10]. You can see, uh, by splitting it that way, the revenue, which is mainly from the taxes, uh, in front of one, in four did change very significantly, because, um, you know, about eight hundred thousand, that increased in front of one, um, and one point four, uh, increased in front of four. So, I can see we're [inaudible 0:17:21]. About half hundred dollars overall, [inaudible 0:17:24]. [inaudible 0:17:27]. Because of [inaudible 0:17:30].
And that, correctly, if I'm saying it wrong, and that deficit is then offset by that twelve percent over the fifty percent in the front balance. Elegantly drawn down, has to be used for staff.
Yeah, so, but, um, so front of one, um.
So, that would make up that difference, the [inaudible 0:18:01].
It would, it would be sixty-two dollars, so that's the, that is the intent, the [inaudible 0:18:06]. As, as [inaudible 0:18:10]. There's a lot of [inaudible 0:18:13]. But, but the intent is, is definitely to draw on [inaudible 0:18:18]. Um, because this, this is one of the most, uh, [inaudible 0:18:22]. This is one of the best ways that we can control [inaudible 0:18:25]. And this is really [inaudible 0:18:28]. Once we stop this, and we're to think of what's coming on October first, it's really gonna change, and we get, we get the [inaudible 0:18:33]. We, we make our [inaudible 0:18:37]. Shows up, and we can't, we can't change it, um, so, uh, so this is, this is kind of the time to decide, um, people to [inaudible 0:18:45].
And so then, do you do, have you done, or do you do sensitivity testing on kind of the collection rate, and what's the, you know, let's assume it's, I wouldn't go higher than ninety-six, just because that's what it's been, and what do you do for going below ninety-six? Or tell me where that shows up, is that, what does that do, I guess, fundamentally, if it's ninety-three percent?
Yeah, so, um, we do, uh, we, we try, our [inaudible 0:19:05]. Um, we do the [inaudible 0:19:08]. And, um, we typically look at and try to see, uh, we do three-year averages, five-year averages, ten-year averages, historical averages, and we [inaudible 0:19:11]. Three-year average, obviously they're all within a fraction of a percent of the second, so, um, and then we use that numbers that you're looking at here. We have this spreadsheet that [inaudible 0:19:21]. But maybe [inaudible 0:19:24]. Before they show up, and so we try to take that [inaudible 0:19:28]. Unless it's the same process that we talked about, we do our question [inaudible 0:19:32]. Yeah, so everything, this, this, we did [inaudible 0:19:35]. April, May, [inaudible 0:19:38]. And, um, and [inaudible 0:19:41]. And then moving on to next, you can see, recommend, still [inaudible 0:19:44]. And I can say, we'll talk to [inaudible 0:19:47]. And then, uh, you can also see that, that, that point, with that large increase in, uh, subvaluation, we [inaudible 0:19:51]. And there is [inaudible 0:19:54]. Um, so does anyone have any questions? Oh, no, I guess, go put the thirty-five [inaudible 0:19:58]. So, so, anyway, then on that, before we move on to the next one.
So, what you're saying is we could be at four ninety-five, or, or instead of four sixty?
Yes.
And, uh, so the awesome question, the same, maybe bring it down, or take it out, if you're [inaudible 0:19:11].
Alright, so the next slide, and again, I apologize, lots of boxes, lots of notes, um, but I'll try to talk down a curve a little bit, just to, I think, I think everyone [inaudible 0:19:21]. Pretty good understanding of the, of the situation where our debt service account, and again, keep in mind, this is completely separate, you know, nothing else, so it's just, nothing to do with operating, nothing to do with features, nothing to do with capital improvements, it's all about paying for our bonds, and paying our [inaudible 0:19:30]. So, that's the, that's the only thing that we can do with it, um, it's the only thing we can do with it, and so that's, we, that's, you know, kind of a completely separate conversation. Um, so then we're recommending [inaudible 0:19:38]. That's, that's [inaudible 0:19:41]. We use it, and [inaudible 0:19:44]. And you can see the [inaudible 0:19:48]. It's going to be generating about just under two point four million dollars, just so everyone is aware, and very, very clear, but the annual debt service of this year is one point seven-ish million dollars, it's, it will be [inaudible 0:19:51]. And, um, personally, [inaudible 0:19:55]. Um, so, talking through that a little bit, uh, you can see on your expenditures, debt service expenditures was three point seven million dollars, way more than [inaudible 0:20:01]. So, that includes [inaudible 0:20:04]. Um, which is something that we are pinpointing number for what the reasons [inaudible 0:20:08]. But, you know that it's [inaudible 0:20:11]. You know that it's [inaudible 0:20:13]. Between now and [inaudible 0:20:15]. Um, there's a lot of factors that go into it, and we have several [inaudible 0:20:21]. [inaudible 0:20:24]. So, um, if you can kind of down to the bottom, you know, the fund balance section a little bit, you can see that it says, uh, beginning fund balance was two point two six million dollars, and it's a hundred and thirty-seven percent. Um, you know, [inaudible 0:20:28]. Fund balances is a hundred and seventy, it's not, not very used to be. That number is as of June [inaudible 0:20:31]. Um, when it comes to debt service, the only fund balance percentage that really matters is that was the summer thirty-first. Um, so that's something that, when the [inaudible 0:20:36]. It was made, that exactly [inaudible 0:20:39]. The reason is because that calculation of those percentages pulled into your tax rate calculation, so we spend a lot of tax rate calculation off if we [inaudible 0:20:41]. That information is in there, um, and, and you [inaudible 0:20:45].
And that summer thirty-first, it cannot be over a hundred percent, so that's why you have to [inaudible 0:20:51].
So, and then you can see the estimated, here, net service fund balance is just under a million dollars, it's twenty, you know, just about twenty-five percent. So, there, there really is, it's gonna be kind of a, I mean, uh, it's going to be a very interesting situation between, um, because our subvaluation has grown so much over the past few years, and because we maintain forty-nine percent, or forty-nine percent of the tax rate, we're generating more revenue than we need, um, but the timing, when we actually have the correct amount of money, and when we can do the reasons, is, is not [inaudible 0:21:01]. So, we may actually be [inaudible 0:21:04]. Possibly [inaudible 0:21:07]. Doing it as much, but we're realizing that if we do it first month, we can do it for reasons, uh, fairly significant, well, no, payoffs in January, and so it just would go out of money, but it also would lead us with a fund balance, as of the summer thirty-first, which next year is so high, that we probably have to do the reasons again next year, and we [inaudible 0:21:11]. Um, we're trying to really push it back into the summer, until we have as much as possible, um, to pay that, and we're [inaudible 0:21:18]. So, we'll at least save [inaudible 0:21:22]. Um, and that's a process that, and the subvaluation continued to go up, um, if we maintain forty-nine percent tax rate, and we do have conditional [inaudible 0:21:30]. Or [inaudible 0:21:33]. So, until [inaudible 0:21:35]. Until the issue [inaudible 0:21:38]. This is a, a process that we're gonna be reviewing every year, too, um, to try to maintain [inaudible 0:21:41]. The [inaudible 0:21:43]. Every time we pay off [inaudible 0:21:46]. Uh, it's just [inaudible 0:21:48]. It's [inaudible 0:21:50]. Our, like [inaudible 0:21:53]. And [inaudible 0:21:55]. We [inaudible 0:21:58]. Lot of [inaudible 0:22:00]. Lots of flexibility, and that's what we're. We've got more, we've identified, we've got a lot of flexibility and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to maintain by doing the process.
And then Steve, is there a, there's just like a cost every time you do it in the fees instance? So by trying to do as much as you can now, do it one time and say it's, it's cost S instead of cost X and Y. The next time you do it in two years, like you're just saving that every time. Is that what you're trying to add?
The cost of doing the events between attorneys and under, under twenty to forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so it's not cheap, but it's also saving significantly money. It's just like, almost like you're like, you're retired.
What do you say, you're retired?
They're, and they're, and they're, so, so there's a lot of positives to it. The only thing that you're, is that, one, it's a easy model. And two, it costs, you know, it does cost twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And really that's where Krista and I are trying to get the, say, push through a little bit more aggressive for our reasons and minds. Is that I think where we want to go is that they typically try to set, uh, fund balance floor, um, and they have the under eight, and that's, well, if I certain fund balance floor. But we have a fair amount of, so we're trying to set, it doesn't need to be as much as possible, so we're not bad here. And so times we're doing this, and I think we're, we're getting toward the even with it. And cause at the other day, you know, it's not, it's not a process that I, I don't know if you're, 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 you can, that would, that would be the reason. Unless you want to feed it here. Yeah, you don't want to keep it, it's a, it's a.
What was the reason we need to change the forty-nine percent? Like what, what happened?
Like to drop it?
Yeah.
So to drop it would be to say, we know we don't need as much to pay for our debt that we might have. We don't plan to, or have more debt in the future, or have to accomplish more debt in the future. So that's a little bit of that. And, and where you see that comes into play is, um, we see business growth, health problems issues. There's, there's two times that we went forward, which is the tax increase bond issue, that can be forty-nine percent of, of, um, that's very sad. Or there's, um, no tax increase bond issues, which essentially is you do the same rate, but, but they should be more, more common. So before we can maintain this book, you know, sort of previous situation, what we can go and achieve, twenty-one million dollars is that to twenty million dollars of one project. But if we're costing taxpayers anything new, um, on an equal basis, it's expensive life of, not wanting to pay that extra, that makes sense.
And if we lowered it, we can raise it back up, we get the financial distress, right?
So the, we're allowed to raise it to cover the costs of our debt.
Okay.
So that's it.
Put it out in the record.
So then you have to back to.
Then.
We don't worry if we have to back to the recorders just because we don't want these to go together again.
Correct. So that's, and so maintaining it is, sorry, maintaining it, yes, is more than we need to pay off the debt. But we still are, we have debt longer in the future, but we can continue to pay future debt down in these years while we're kind of this metaphor. Uh, but it also does offset flexibility for, for more debt, maybe like that type of things in the future. And I think we're probably able to, you know, we have, I think it was near a lot of costs, I'm pretty much everything from our last. But it's a win for the product store. But what can you add? That's probably something that's on the road, I think, kind of. Um, so I kind of talked about several of these things and the, and the days are familiar, I have a whole lot, um, so as of right now, I have to use this amount. We're approximating one point six to two million dollars, um, at the false number, I think. So anything key to that is we're hoping, we're hoping to, to pay off enough that we can, still, I think, during the reasons for, for, for. Um, the days you can see they're starting on, debase these documents, you guys, and things like that. That's mostly for Krista and I and the foundation council and, and, um, we're, um, we're, um, we're supporting, twelve-seventh is the date that we're targeting. We'll be here, uh, so we'll, 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 we'll have a reservation, um, talk about, we'll, 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 those next two weeks. And, uh, people will, they'll come, the back story of the work of the, um, and they'll, they'll have recovery, uh, that's the day we're going to write it.
Who does it have to circulate to and who gets to comment?
Yeah, so the circulation, probably most certainly between Crystal and I, or Renze, probably I forgot. And we get more, and honestly, ninety-nine percent of it will be good one of those things.
It's not like public circulation.
No, no, and then, yeah, that's second directive, I think their goal is to get that so that it's posted a week and a half. it's supposed to, uh, a lean, so that everyone can have a, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of, um, ask any questions, but I'll say a lot of times in this process, because there's, once you can actually enter the process, there, there's a difference in what they do and what the afternoon team can say, so, um, and, and this will be Krista and I's first time to, to sort of, to, to, to. Okay, so, um, from the, everyone we made that Esther three, I know we talked about this a little bit earlier, um, so it's probably pretty quick, I think, a little bit, it's point just under two point three million dollars, what I have to, um, allocation is, um, we, we kind of got to talk about a couple of some of it, um, mostly it's the same as the first two essers, um, that came our way, um, except that's not, it's a couple of debt we asked to return to school and, as, as, since the beginning of summer, um, I guess June, um, and then this had, uh, the twenty percent, eighty percent, twenty percent of the funds are supposed to be used to address some of the loss through, so we also put that on, so you can see what that, that was considered, so the stance looks like. Um, so one thing that is, that's different, they changed it, um, is funds will be received on a yearly enrollment basis, so plus you, um, kind of informational package, like some of those, they said that there's been seventy-five percent of the funds, uh, to, you know, they, you know, the state got them, um, and then in this, in this last update, two years, uh, was what they raised themselves in the during the reverse, uh, which is hella a lot of other, that, that funds work, and how most of the entire, uh, uh, that's their funds that work, but, uh, the conversation that we've done in the past about that could have a pretty decent implication on our fund balance, unless of now, because, um, Krista and I, a few of us, to try and manage our revenue expenses for us, there's three years in the same four years, so there could be a little bit of jinx a lot, I, maybe that happens, just because, if we need to be having a little different project, or put that number some, so there is a little, little, good stuff between a year or two, but it shouldn't be us just getting a big, important, um, federal funds and not, you know, two, for a year or something like that, so, um, and that is the change. And then, as Travis mentioned earlier, uh, we did submit a budget on August twenty-third, uh, that was required, that doesn't go out, uh, so the date can all be revised as many times as possible, or as long as it, I guess, on, on this, so that's something that we did, um, and then also, as I mentioned, September is a good, a lot of, and then, and then really, I put a grid in, certainly not anyone that we pared that much about at this point, but, and you can see what the numbers are, um, as we said, twenty percent, we put in some, some, you know, what we, kind of, that real basic, kind of, that we identified people to, to help with, and also, a couple of materials and supplies, uh, things like, um, facility supplies and things like that, and then, uh, support services, which has particular more remote, more options that are kind of available this year, that, um, we call their, sort of, we call them, uh, twelve point five, which is about, which we play into the capital office facilities, so, um, those, those are, are now, uh, most of the change.
So I mean, those support services include things like MoCap and whatever else we're using for students, for the virtual stuff right now?
So.
Because now it requires a paper badge, or else the weather has to be a public.
Correct.
Do they get more clear on, because obviously staff is such a clear user to twenty percent, I mean, because you can argue that staff is not going to be evidence-based help for students, but do they give any further info about what they were going to include in that?
There's not a ton of that, I see.
Staff is evidence-based, so it makes a lot of sense.
Yep. Yeah, there's, there's still a ton of information, so, it's, it's pretty easy to find, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm, and, 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 and,[1037.12]